Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Alright, good evening everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular board meeting scheduled on July 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Estill County Board of Education boardroom located on Main Street in Irvin. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome everyone and I would like to start by standing to say our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. I'd like to remind everyone, if you'd like to sign in, there's a sign in sheet by the door, the entranceway to the facility. Mr. Brock, do we have any revisions to this board agenda?
Uh, no, we have no revision.
Okay, thank you. First on our agenda this evening is our facilities instruction, construction update. And we have Kenny here and we also have Peter's replacement, which is Jonathan Ruiz. And so, welcome. First on the agenda is our Estill Springs School project, which is BG 22-207.
Okay, I'll talk about that. So, we're wrapping up there.
Give him the microphone.
If the weather hadn't got to us this week, we probably would've finished the punch list this week and been out of there. But obviously with the weather the way it's been, now next week's supposed to look nice. So that's our game plan next week. For those that have driven by there, you can see we got a little problem there with some of the erosion where that metal building is, eroding down and taking a lot of mud right now down onto the pavement. We're gonna address that, I'm gonna get with Jonathan and his team. We gotta come up with maybe a different idea of how that's gonna be completed. But I don't think it's gonna be that big a deal, so I think next week we'll get that wrapped up as well. I think Jonathan was here today, he was gonna do some punch list work or a back punch. We've already completed the work, he's gonna check it to make sure it's done. So, like I said, if we get some weather next week, I should wrap that thing up next Friday.
Sounds good.
Yep.
So, next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of a change order number five to Jarboe and change order number two, 2253-01-01, to the contractors to up choice for a net zero change to the construction cost to correct materials purchases shown on prior change orders.
Just to clarify, are you talking about the pay application number 10 for Estill Springs? Or are you going to the next project?
It's the change order number five, it's right under the uptake.
Okay. Oh, okay. So, in terms of the change orders, so just to summarize number five, the net zero net change is to move about ninety-seven dollars from Jarboe's contract into the contractors' choice contract, just to make sure that equaled out for when the full summary update happens at closeout. Number six is for additional work that was discovered when the hardware was installed. There were about twenty-three doors that once the lock started to be checked, they didn't quite match with the strike plates. Long story short, the intent was to replace a lot of the hardware sets with the strike plates, but the current openings for strike plates, because we didn't replace doors, they didn't align. So to field modify a lot of those doors, we had about three different approaches. All that ended up being an additional add to the project. And I think the other small old piece incorporated with that is a request for adding, I think, two more handles to the vestable side of things. So, let me just tie that with a summary update of basically, the pay app is accounting for not a hundred percent, but about ninety-three percent of completion, so that when the August final pay app comes in, it will allow for the change orders in front of you all to be incorporated and for the full project to be closed out in August. So, kind of a couple of points there.
Well, I kinda skipped around, so I just glanced down at my paper. So actually, talking about the Estill Springs project, we should talk about pay app number 10. So I kinda skipped around. It's been a long day.
That's all right.
So it's for the amount of seven hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. So, back up to the Estill Springs project. So, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's been approved by both Ross Tarr and Codell, so we're ready for you guys to approve it.
Okay. Alright, are you good with that, Mr. Brock?
Yeah, it's my recommendation, we approved it.
Okay. So I would like to ask for a motion to consider the pay app number 10 as discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion about that? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So that's everything on Estill Springs. So now, we're gonna talk about item B, which is our Estill County Safety and ADA Upgrade Project, which is BG 23-087.
Yes.
Alright, so you reviewed some of that, so.
Yes.
We'll need to ask for a motion for each individual one of those. So first, you gave us an update. Is there anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Other than, once these change orders are executed, that'll allow, at least number six, that would allow Jarboe to finish the last twenty-three doors and then the project should be done contractually for what the scope had asked for. So that's all I would ask.
Okay. So, I need a motion to approve change order number five to Jarboe, and we discussed that earlier. Do I have a motion? Brian Covey makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. So next, we have change order number six, and I need a motion to approve that, and he discussed that with Jarboe. It's change order number 2253-01-02, and it is to contractors' choice to add new door hardware at the entry vestable and modify door latch strike plates at Estill Middle School. So do I have a motion? Brian Covey makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. And then last, we have the, I need a motion to approve pay application number three with DPO invoicing in the amount of a hundred and three thousand dollars, six hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Brian Covey makes a motion, do we have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next on our agenda, we have consideration to approve a structural engineer for the Estill County Middle School project.
I can talk about that just a little bit. So, he was talking about some of the things that has affected the change order with the striker plates, and that's due to the movement of the building. We did have a structural engineer come in a year ago and look at the building and say that it was safe for students to be in, and we have the report on that, we got that in March. This is just to have the structural engineer come back in, make sure that it is still safe, but do some more exploration to see exactly the extent of the damage and maybe what it would cost for us to fix that in the future. And looking at the cost benefits of fixing it versus maybe potentially a new middle school down the road. Safety and student safety is our first priority, and we just wanna make sure that our kids are safe. And from the report, we just kinda wanna dig a little bit deeper.
So, I need a motion to approve for us to get a structural engineer for the Estill County Middle School. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Brian Covey makes a second. Do we have any discussion? I think most everyone knows that that building has been an issue, and we've been monitoring it for a while, and so we want to continue to monitor it safely and make sure that it's good for students, as Mr. Brock shared. So, we'll try to get somebody in here in a timely manner and then hopefully we can go from there.
Yeah, Mr. Willis and I actually walked through it a couple times this week, so.
Okay. So, do we have any further discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. I think that's all we have for you guys. Here it is next.
Thank you.
Mr. Sailor's not here.
I've been here three years.
Thank you, Jonathan. Be careful on the road, it's starting to rain.
See, we've not, Jonathan's not gotten broken properly. Thank you.
It's that math logical brain, just the facts. I give you the facts and if you have any more information, I'm more than happy we can discuss it.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, so moving right along, that brings us down to our action items. So first on our list, item A is we need to approve the student discipline code in school supplement, in school supplements, sorry.
So Mr. Norton had talked about that this week. There were some changes that had to be made, just some staffing names and different things like that. And then there was one policy that we kinda changed the wording around a little bit. If you want him to talk a little bit more about that, he can, but it was basically just updating names. And there was one policy, he already talked to the principals and stuff about it, they're aware of the changes there. And it's kind of taking one of our discipline policies and changing it to where it's better for our kids. It was a little bit outdated, I think, and then it wasn't the best interest of our kids to keep the wording that we had.
Mr. Norton, would you like to come and address everyone concerning that? Do you have anything else to share or?
So basically, what it does is it puts the district out of the business of saying, this is a mandatory minimum decision that you have to make, and it gives autonomy to our principals to look at a situation and what is surrounding the circumstances behind it and making an informed decision as to what's best for an individual student instead of a one-size-fits-all approach.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. So I need a motion to approve our student discipline code in school supplements. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? And that information was in your packet for everyone to review, so.
Yep.
This time, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, that brings us down to our consent items. Do you want to review any of those, Mr. Brock?
I mean, you've got the information, it's just the minutes from June the fifteenth, our treasures report, which is just kind of the payment of bills, that's just the month-to-month, cyber readiness preparation report, and Mr. Simpson does a good job with that. Fiscal year, federal cash request statements, assurances, that was actually in GMAP, and he had to get me added to that. So we ran in there today and I went through all of those and kinda compared to where we were at last year and made sure that they were taken care of. It would not cooperate and print for me for some reason, but we'll get a copy of it, but it's very similar to what we had last year. The federal crash request statements, again, chairperson, we've got to train those every year, and the board has to approve who can chair A R Cs. And I think you have a list of names there and the trainings that they've had. And approve the business proposal for speech therapy services, I think we're still down one speech therapist, and so we're gonna try to contract out again. Ms. Bryant said that was very helpful last year, and since we are down one, we need that contract again to be able to service our students and the needs that they have. Surplus items, we have a whole lot of surplus items that we just kinda wanna clear out and sell, and they're everything from sinks to scoreboards. That'll be announced, Mr. Willis is kinda spearheading that project, and we'll have a bid or a sealed bid or an auction, similar to the district has done in the past. Be better if we can get some funding out of it than them sitting in a back room down here in a basement, so that's what that's for. And then, the consider approval for the amended twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four staffing policy, and that's the one that deals with the assistant superintendent, and you all are aware of that.
Mr. Brock?
Yes?
I am required to, I'm going to the next office, policy. I am required to remind the board that if we ever do have a cybersecurity issue such as hacking issue, or if anybody's identity gets stolen, it is responsibility of the board to implement any type of identity theft protection for that and all individuals, if it is school reading. And so, all of the documents that you see there, K D E, in terms of what is required for our board to follow in terms of a cyber attack.
And that's just in the event that we are attacked and data is stolen.
That is correct.
Yes.
And just so you all know, we have implemented two-factor authentication, you will probably even seen it, that's done, it's required I K D E, it's on the Google side and the Microsoft side, which is going to bring us up in the particular system.
Okay. And just so that everyone is clear on that, the staffing policy, we have to have that presented by July one, is that right Andrea? Our completed staffing policy of all our positions, is that July?
Well, we just need, we've already approved one, so now we're going to make an amendment.
But this is like all of our final, final jobs for the school year.
Yes.
And so, the assistant superintendent job was taken out of that, but we are adding that back into our staffing policy.
Still on our salary schedule.
And it was still on our, we never, we never took that salary schedule away, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on that. Is there anything further that you'd like to add, Mr. Brock?
I'd just recommend that we approve all the consent items.
Okay. So with that, I need a motion to approve the consent items as discussed. Do I have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a five oh vote. That brings us down to our superintendent report. Mr. Brock?
Okay, so it's been a busy few weeks, and I've kinda tried to hit the ground running. I'll tell you, we do have a wonderful team here at Estill County. I've had the opportunity to get to know them a little better, to meet with them, and really get down to business with some of the things that we want to look at, academics and moving students forward academically this year being our main focus. So, we've had a couple of M T S S meetings, which means multi-tiered systems of support, which is around academics, behavior, and social-emotional, and it's a tiered system. So each one of those components, academics, behavior, and emotional support, social-emotional learning, has tier one, tier two, and tier three. And so we started the process of looking at those tiers, the supports they already have in place, we have those charted out, and for each tier, tier one is like what would happen in the normal classroom. Tier two is a little bit more intense, and tier three is very intense and very targeted intervention for all three of those levels. So we had two meetings, the first meeting I led, the second meeting, we had Southeast-South Central Co-op come in, and Dusty Phelps and his team, they're wonderful, and they kinda facilitated that meeting, and we got started with what that process will look like and what those matrices will look like for schools and for our students. We, I had a teacher by heart, I guess, so I had an exit slip for my principals for where they were at in leading some of the work and what supports that they needed. Ms. O'Brien and I have already talked about those lists, and then we're gonna meet in the near future to meet with each principal to support them in those needs. So we had that, had a principals' meeting today, which I felt went very well. If they didn't think so, they did not tell me. But no, and I've got pictures of them doing all kinds of work around the standards and the PSL standards that they will be evaluated on this year, and surprise, surprise, because we're focusing on academic standard four and standard six, which is curriculum instruction standard four and standard six being kinda growing your people, supports, a culture for retaining teachers are the ones that I told them we would really focus in on this year. We've had discussions about curriculum, I know that the elementary has curriculum, and we purchased that for them last year, but middle school and high school still do not have one, and we are missing a progress monitoring system, which really gives us real-time data on where students are academically, so that we can make good database decisions on moving them forward. We have a universal screener, that's law, we have to do that, and that is our map testing right now, but that's done three times a year, the fall, and in the winter, and in the spring. And some of y'all are thinking right now, we didn't think he could talk as much as Mr. Sailor, but he's doing a pretty good job. But that's done three times a year. You can't make academic data three times a year and make decisions on that. We need something that they can use real time. So I met with Angie this morning, and we looked at the budget, and we do have some monies to purchase those. We're gonna start looking at some options for curriculum and some options for a progress monitoring system, but we have to move pretty quickly on that. We don't want to overwhelm teachers the first year, our main focus in academics is gonna be standards, the success criteria, the learning targets, and the clarity work that they started training on last spring. But to give them some better data, we also need that progress monitoring piece. Ms. Napier has expressed that she needs some support this year, which obviously, I mean, she's got a relatively young staff, she has a new assistant principal, a new counselor. Her and I and Ms. O'Brien are meeting tomorrow, and we're going to get a plan together on what those supports look like. A curriculum would help her a lot, because it at least gives some resources for her teachers that are, that are learning how to teach while teaching, so that they're not pulling from everywhere. And so I think that's really, really important. So we've talked about that, talked about curriculum. Opening day, we're planning for that, and I do have that is on the seventh, I think, I have it written down here, I think it's August the seventh, it'll be a half-day, it will be at the high school, and I will address the entire staff that day and just kinda lay out goals and visions for this year. And it is, it'll be at the high school, we'll have it in the auditorium. Melinda and I have been talking, she's got vendors coming, door prices, just kinda similar to the way it's been in the past, except for we'll be at the high school instead of here. And like I said, we'll address, I'll address the staff that day.
Are they gonna start at seven o'clock in the morning?
We.
I seen that, I was like, God.
We'll probably start serving breakfast at seven o'clock in the morning, but we won't start festivities until a little bit later, and then we'll introduce new staff and all of that too, and just have a big time. I will have to give Melinda credit, she's done a really good job of getting door prizes, and she showed us a picture today, I think me and Andrea, of this big grill that she's got as like a four-burner, big nice gas grill, is one of the door prizes, so we've got that. I'll let principals talk here in just a minute about their opening days and their plans. I know we got some things going on at Estill Springs tonight, and we've, I've had, said hit the ground running, I've had, already have one meeting with the new superintendent's cohort, cohort twelve, and if anybody thinks it's a vacation, come with me next time. I think the first day, we got down about nine-thirty or ten o'clock of the evening after everything, and the next day, lots of good information, I'm learning a lot of things, and that's something that I have to participate in throughout the year. It does take me out of district a few days. We did request that they do some of those virtually, so at least we will be in district. And so, that cohort twelve, got a lot of new contacts there. Actually, we started a group text called Rookie Superintendents, and so, we've already been burning each other's phones up, but I made some, like I said, some good contacts with also seasoned superintendents, and Andrea and I actually called one of them today with a question, and he was able to answer it for us immediately. We have Casey next week as a leadership team, looking forward to going up and being part of that and doing some team building things. And then on the thirty-first, we're gonna do our district kinda retreat, but it's not really a treat, it'll be a whole day working, working session really with all of our district employees and our principals and assistant principals and coaches, and just trying to get, kinda finalize some planning for the rest of the year. And each director and each principal will have a portion of time during that. Director is showing talent, talking about what they do, what their roles are, how they can support principals in schools, and then also asking what do you need to be successful academically this year. And then also, I'll be presenting and bringing kind of a team building activity in that morning, so that, it's called Narrative Four, so that we can just kinda bond and get together and maybe be a little bit better and stronger leadership team. I am excited to work with these people, they have all been wonderful so far, they're excited about the work, I'm excited to lead them and excited to lead the district. I've got lots and lots of other things that I could say, 'cause I love academics and I love Estill County. I have already fallen in love with this place, we cannot wait to move up here, I wish my house would sell. So if the people that looked at my house today at four o'clock is watching, please buy my house. But we're gonna, we're gonna get up here in August either way, whether we have to rent or whether we can close on the house that the offer was accepted on. But this is a wonderful place, wonderful people, wonderful staff and kids, we are gonna do great things this year. And our theme for this year, and we'll unveil it officially the first day, is engineering success. That's what our theme is for the year, and that's what we're gonna be about, and that's what we're gonna focus on, and I just can't wait to get kids in the building. I've already been around to the buildings two or three times, sometimes you all have seen me, sometimes you haven't, that's okay. They are looking amazing, custodians are doing a wonderful job, like the floors, it's just, they, not only are the exterior of our buildings awesome, the interior is awesome too, and everybody. Maintenance is doing a great job, we're moving success canopy here, so that they've got their own space, they've took these two classrooms. Everybody, maintenance is doing a great job. We're moving success academy here so that they've got their own space. They've took these two classrooms over here. They're reworking them. Listen, I can go on and on and on about the great things and the great people. So you all thought you got rid of somebody that didn't like to talk for somebody that maybe was a little bit quieter. But it's, it's wonderful and we've had a great start and we're going to have a wonderful school year. So one thing I want to do, and I want to try to do this maybe every board meeting, I want to give every principal just two, three, five minutes to brag on their schools and talk about what great things they have going on. And today, maybe their opening day and their nights and their different things like that. So Mr. Yost, do you want to go first? I will voluntold you to come up first.
We got a microphone.
Yeah, you can come up here. For you all, we've got a lot of great things going on at the high school. Just today, I want you all, when we have opening day, I want you all to come see the new foods lab. They just got done putting the new stainless countertops in. Well, they're finishing it tomorrow, but the stainless countertops went down today. They'll be doing the ceiling and backsplash and everything for that tomorrow. It looks phenomenal. It's going to be.
I was down there earlier this week and they had painted the cabinets and they look good. There was a few things I think they needed to touch up on it. And they were stripping the room and I've got, I want to go back and see those countertops. It was looking really good.
Looking real sharp. I do want to brag on our custodians, like Mr. Brock said. The high school's looking the best it's looked since I've been there. They're doing a great job getting everything ready for the year. The auditorium, you all will see a dramatic change when you go in there for opening day. The, every wall in the auditorium's been painted. They got new carpet down and it is looking sharp. It's going to have a good fresh look. And when the sound system gets redone, it's going to be really state of the art for us to be able to have assemblies, presentations, community events, you name it. This summer, there's been a lot of cool stuff going on with the high school. Gear Up finished their road trip, their college road trip they took, you all approved back in the spring. They went to five different colleges, trade schools, things of that nature. We had 21 students, I believe, end up going. So that was a really great opportunity for those students to go to different parts of the state and experience some different locations that they wouldn't normally get to go to. Last year, if you recall graduation, we had two students who finished from Craft Academy. We have two additional students who will be going to Craft Academy this fall, Caitlin Gregory and Alexis Stevens, as well as one student, Madison Riddle, who will be attending the Gattan Academy at WKU. So we're really proud of those three students and being able to take advantage of those opportunities that they've been set up for success. So and I want to thank you all as a board, whether you know it or not. You all take care of their books while they're at Craft and Gattan. So I appreciate that because you all are making an investment in the success of our students. So thank you all very much for that. Back to school for us, August 2nd will be freshman and transfer orientation as usual. We'll have backyard, our back to school barbecue. So we'll have some food for everybody and you are more than welcome to come out to that if you'd like to. It's from five to seven on August 2nd. Senior schedule and information pickup, parking passes and all that good stuff will be August 3rd in the afternoon. And then juniors and sophomores will have the ability to come out on August 4th, pick up their schedules, go through the building, see their classrooms, those different things as well. So we're excited to get the year going back at Estill County High School. We've got a lot of great stuff going on. The whole staff comes back the week of July 31st for PD. So we're excited to hit the ground running this year. Thank you all.
My, my son is excited at the August 2nd. He wants to get in there and, and look around and see what, what's the layout of the building is. So, thank you, Mr. Yost.
Thanks so much.
I want to say thank you for putting on Facebook like you're doing your science teachers here.
I love that.
Because I, I will be honest, your science teachers, you know, might have been out long enough now that, you know, but this has helped me to kind of put names to faces. And I think that's been real good that you've been doing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the constituents in my district really appreciate that. I forward to them too.
Thank you, Mr. Yost.
Ms. Napier?
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you. And Mr. Brock, I love that idea that we get to brag on our schools every month. And that will, you'll have to put a time limit on each of us, I suspect. But no, I also want to talk about, first of all, our building and the changes that have happened this summer. I know that you guys have invested quite a bit over the past eight years, but even this summer, I mean, that work is continuous and the buildings are looking amazing. And I want to brag on the Estill Springs project. I love driving by there every day and seeing that parking lot and the new memorial. It just, it looks really, that school, that campus looks amazing. So kudos to you. But at the middle school this summer, I'll sum it up in the words of Dave Bryce this morning. He's our head custodian. And he's, you know, last summer he was kind of rushed and didn't get to fix the, wax the hallways and he was disappointed with that. But they're getting to that point now. And he said, you know what, Ms. Napier? That looks pretty good, don't it? Said, yes, David does. So they're very proud of their work. So I think they would really mu- very much appreciate if you guys got to visit and see how much of that work has gone into this summer and how good the buildings look on the inside as well as the outside. I think they would appreciate that. I know I do. This summer, as far as our, our students go, they had quite the opportunities to travel. Mr. Flynn and the student council, right after school was out, they had the opportunity to travel to Louisville for a couple of days. And I will ask them to come with me in August. We, the middle school will present in August. And I'm, I don't want to go into a lot of detail because I want these groups to come tell you themselves about their experiences this summer. But our student council did get to go to Louisville and they experienced quite a bit. They got to see the Fraser History Museum, the Derby Dinner Theater, and they visited the Louisville Zoo. I'll let them tell you a little bit more about that trip though. Some of our eighth grade students got to go to Washington DC and that was with KEDC. Ms. Brandy Smith was part of a grant called the Aspire Grant through KEDC. And she actually, from a pool of applicants from across the country, she got selected. And so each of one of those teachers who were selected got to choose eight students to take to Washington DC. And she took eight of our students and they absolutely had a ball. I'll, again, I'll bring them in August and let them tell you about their, their trip if Mr. Yost will let me borrow them because they will be freshmen at that point. But I'm sure they will. One of the most exciting things that happened on that trip was they, from all of those schools that went, they selected four students to, to assist with laying a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington National Cemetery. And one of our students got to do that. So if you haven't seen that video of our, it gives me chills. If you haven't seen that video of our student helping with that process, I posted it on Facebook. So, so watch that. It's very, it's very powerful. So that's been a couple of really good experiences for our students. Right when school was out, the ATC had a camp where several of our students attended and they got to go experience some welding and some electrical engineering and building. And that was really good for them to, to be exposed to the ATC. So that's, that's what our students have been up to. Our teachers have been quite busy as well. To start off with, we, we had a lot of vacancies and I feel like we have made some good quality hires, especially in terms of administrators. I'll bring them to the August meeting as well so that you can meet our new counselor and our new assistant principal. But they have been working very hard this summer to get some, to learn because they're new administrators, but also to get things rolling. Some of our teachers, five of our teachers participated in a week-long Elevate Conference in Lexington. It was also hosted by KEDC. And they attended some sessions and topics for ELA, Arts and Humanities, Writing, Social Studies, Content Strategies. And then lastly, Laura Davis and Brandy Smith both attended a week-long civil rights tour of the South. And that was also with KEDC's Aspire Group. But they got to travel through Tennessee and Alabama and they visited locations like Memphis and Selma and Montgomery. And they learned about the history of the civil rights movement. So I'm very proud that our teachers use their summer to really get experiences to bring back to our students. And I'm really proud of those people who've worked very hard. So that's, I'm like, Mr. Brock, I can talk and talk and talk about our good people, but.
Training this week and got a follow-up tomorrow, I think.
Say what?
The clarity work for the.
Yes, we have, thank you for, some of our teachers have been working, especially our ELA teachers and our math teachers. They have been working with the Kentucky Department of Education Improvement Coaches on developing that clarity work and working on their curriculum. We also had Ms. Jackie Thompson from the Kentucky Department of Education come in this past week and the new hires that we had did not get to go through that clarity training. So we had her come in and take them through the whole six-hour clarity training so that they can get caught up and, and we can just hit the ground running when we get that new curriculum. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Napier.
You're welcome.
Ms. Harbin? Listen, when we're bragging on schools and kids, we don't need a timer.
No, you don't know me very well, Mr. Brock. I need a timer. I love pictures. These are very small, but I at least wanted you all to, to see some of these. Sorry, going both ways, aren't we, Ms. Napier? Sorry, I got out of Ms. Napier's way. Oh, did I hit somebody one with my notes on the bottom of it? Because it's other principals, it's back there. Wonderful. Because I've realized there were other things I needed to say. First of all, I think our board is always amazing and you all have always very, with, with very encouraging words. I felt that you all have encouraged us to do things with our families. I've never felt unsupported in that work. But as, as we talked about summer plans, and I want to clarify a comment that I made even last spring. I never felt like you all wanted us to do anything except just stay in touch with our families. You all are a concerned board and we are blessed with that. So working with our family resource person, Ms. Courtney Barnes, we decided one way we could do that was to plan field trips that students could just sign up for. It gave us an opportunity to get families together. Because of some of the safety regulations, it is hard to get families in and do things with them. We wanted to be able for brothers and sisters, for siblings to be together. In my case, cousins, my grandchildren got to go on trips together, you know, with their aunts. And other families were the same way. It was awesome. So the, the purpose of that really was to build those relationships and to, to take advantage of that, that summertime. But please don't think that we weren't sitting on boats in caves and me trying to teach vocabulary. So it, it was, it was just a good trip all around. But some of the most amazing things, I would not want to embarrass a child, but we had one little fellow that has just been my, my partner through these trips. We went to the Newport Aquarium. He really wanted to walk across the sharks. So afraid. He, he just couldn't do it. But he got there and he ended up walking across the shark tank about five times. He said, I can't believe I did it. So then we get to the falls and he said, he, he was really getting upset. He said, I don't think I can do this. I don't think I can do it, Ms. Harbin. I said, will you be my buddy? And let's, let's just go sit on the boat before everybody gets here and see if you're going to make it. Got on that boat and he said, I love this. I can go out on the water. Let's do it. And he said over and over, I'm so happy I did this. So, but we had those kind of stories with so many of our kids. It was a fantastic experience. And I'm very thankful for Courtney Barnes and our family resource program. We have also worked to do front porch visits. We do love this. Sometimes we miss families, but even if we miss them, we get to see their homes. We can make that connection with students. So I think our time is well worth it and we're appreciative of our transportation team that keeps vans gassed up and ready for us to, to use for those trips. But I want to brag on, there on the front, the bottom, our support team. We have had absolutely amazing support from this district. The meals that were provided from the summer feeding program, they were fantastic. Our kids loved them. So they provided breakfast and lunch for all of those field trips. Our transportation team has been phenomenal and joined right in on the fun and encouraged and, and been a part of those relationship building opportunities with the kids. And then I really wanted to brag on our maintenance team. I have a picture there and I've posted some of those on Facebook as well. West Urban has a fantastic building and we have since it was built, but it, it needed to be cleaned up on the outside. It looks brand new. I don't know if you've had a chance to drive over by there. It looks awesome. But it has taken hours of, of power washing. So I just really want to thank our support team. On the back, I am like Ms. Napier. I know that research shows that teacher efficacy is one of the biggest impacters on student success. And, and part of that is empowering students through great learning opportunities. And through KEDC, the Charge Grant, it's very similar to the, to the Aspire Grant. They're kind of sister grants. But Charge and Hero, you can see pictures of our teachers there. The, the Kagan training that four of them went to, that cost a fortune. And they're going to be able to bring that back to our students. And not only to the students in their classrooms, but they'll be able to help other teachers master those skills. So absolutely phenomenal. Ms. Kirby won that picture of Picasso. She's already called to say, where can we hang this at West Urban? I'm not sure, but we're going to find a very special place for it. We're excited that three of our teachers got to attend to work with KDE in Frankfurt. And they were working on how to integrate content so that our primary grades could have more effective science and social studies instruction, that it would be really focused on the standards. It just wouldn't be haphazard. We want to get it to the point where we know students are getting everything they need. And we're not taking any chances with that. Ms. Stephanie Smith, thanks to Mr. Brock, he was one of the, that was one of the first texts, like, Mr. Brock, please can we do this? But Southeast, South Central had an, had an opening for a teacher in the region to be trained, to be a regional trainer for a reading strategy that aligns with our MTSS program. It will provide services for tier two and tier three. And now Ms. Smith is a trainer that could train other teachers in our district or in other districts to help students. And I think that's, that's very powerful. Ms. Des Kirby, and I did not bring all my notes up here, but she through Charge has also got to become a part of iCivics. And that is a, a very intensive program. She collects data and shares that with, with the folks in iCivics. I know that there are amazing opportunities that I can't even describe to you that our students get to go through and we actually get the data to see how it's impacting their learning. So I'm looking forward to, to looking at the data and seeing what social studies instruction looks like in our second grade classroom. At West Urban, we keep trying to add more opportunities for students to be in the building. We know that building relationships with our youngest learners is, is important because if we get them there, we're going to be able to support them throughout their time in Estill County. So we've tried to add in extra things like story time so that the kids can be in the building with their families and hopefully relieve some of those anxious feelings. I did not have any more room for any pictures, but I would love to talk about the community work that the school has done over the summer. We were a part of Relay for Life and Markham and Wallace and other community partners, the Estill County High School, really helped to create a, a very meaningful event. Our children at West Urban managed, and I do not have the exact number and I'm sorry for that, but it was, it was close to about $800 that our children raised. So I'm very proud of them that they want to reach out and help others. We also partnered with 4H to provide a 4H camp at West Urban. We really were just a facility, but, but the kids loved it, the smiles that happened in that, in the building that day. So that gets us down to what else do we have coming up? It's not written on there, but it's posted all over Facebook. July 30th, we'd love for you to put your bathing suits on and come join us at Lake Reba at Paradise Cove. We're going to have a back to school pool party. And that is sponsored through FRC. And it's our last field trip of the year. So we will run a bus for any students that can't get over there, but parents and families can also come. On August 1st, we will have kindergarten camp, just to get a small group of our youngest learners in the building and try to get them a little more acclimated. And then on August 7th, we have open house for all of our students to come and be in the building and meet their teachers and see their classrooms. There's a lot and I, I know I could talk more too, but I wanted to give you all an overview. I'm very proud of our students and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Harbin. South Urban preschool.
Yep, South Urban.
South Urban. So I've put some pictures so that you can see just what happened today at South Urban. So South Urban, it's like the school that never stops. Thanks to, um, series, our partnership with Head Start, we have people there working seven to four every day. Any day you come, you can call a number and somebody comes out. We had babies in the building until the very last day of June. Because we have early Head Start there. So just for a couple of weeks, it's been a little bit quieter. But our main work during the summer is recruitment. So that begins for us in March. And you don't see any of our staff like myself or our family service workers from Head Start in that picture because we have been covered in papers. You wouldn't even have been able to see us. Because it's not easy to enroll our children for preschool. We go through so many files and papers to determine who qualifies, what documents they're missing because there's so many health requirements they have to have before they enter school too. So that's what we've been deep in. And you'll see the first three pictures on there, that's from a health fair that we had today. So we have a nurse practitioner that comes in, in the summer and she does physicals, lead screenings, hemoglobins, so that we can get those requirements checked off for the kids. And then during that time, we also have community partners come in and Kona ice. So we, Head Start sponsored 100 Kona ice today. We didn't use them all, but they were good enough to do that for our children. We didn't use them all, but they were good enough to do that for our children. We are working on our health fair because some of the requirements that they have to have for school, the nurse practitioner can't offer. And they have to have vision exams, not just the screening, we can do the screening, and dental exams. So, we're looking for a partnership that can do that. We found one. We just have to get some more information from them. On the right, that picture is summer feeding. That happened every day until tomorrow throughout the summer. Tomorrow's their last day, but that's a drive-through service, so those cooks are there preparing almost 300 meals a day. They send 100 to daycare, some to the park, and then we serve out almost 100 there at the drop-in. So, that's what's going on this summer at South Urban. I'll tell you about some dates coming up. Our open house is August 3rd, 4 to 6. We usually do our open house the week later than everybody else, but we wanted to use August 3rd this year because we're going to be scheduling home visits. Preschool's required to do home visits. That is a great thing because it also helps us build relationships with the family, not just the children. So, at open house, teachers will also be scheduling their first home visit. We begin preschool three days later than the rest of the district. We take one of those three days to help with kindergarten. We help get them settled in, and we also do brigands testing for them one of those days. The other two days, our staff will have some little bit of flexibility in their schedule because we'll be doing home visits on those days, and sometimes that's in the evening. So, it might be that our staff comes in a little bit later and then works late because they'll be in homes. I'll have to share for South. Ms. Hall, maybe?
Yep. Ms. Mullins, I thought she, she thought she was going to make it. She has, I think it's a kindergarten camp tonight, yeah. And she also had a SBDM meeting. I know I've been in the building a couple of times. Yesterday, I was down there, and her teachers were in a training. They were doing collaborative, collaborative classroom instruction, Level Two. I think they did Level One last year, and, and I just stepped in a minute and actually took the superhero pose with them. That's part of that training, if you don't know collaborative classroom, but it's, it's good work, and so they've got a lot of really, really good things going on there as well, and I'm sure she would brag on her school if she hadn't have got tied up. But that kind of takes us through my report and the school's reports, and do you all have any questions?
Ms. O'Brien, do you want to talk about any, about the work that we've been doing, or...
Yes. It's wonderful. We have a lot of really great plans coming, and we have a lot of really great work to do with the school. The MTSS work, we have our clarity work, and our curriculum work. So, the schools have great plans planned, and the teachers have a lot of really excellent learning that the students participate in as we go through the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Okay, so that brings us down to our Board Member Forum. Do we have anything to share? Anybody?
Well, I have a couple of things that I wanted to share. So, on September 11th, at starting at 5:30, I will be hosting, our district will be hosting KSBA for our region, and so it's a huge deal. No one can ever recall hosting a KSBA meeting here. So, all of our state officials will be here. We will have some senators and legislators here. And then the upper middle Kentucky River is part of our region, so that includes Lee all the way as far as Hazard. So, there will be a lot of people coming into our district, and we'll be hosting that between the ATC and the high school, but I would like to encourage everyone to mark that on your calendar. I told Mr. Brock that I really wanted Estill County to show up big, so we want to show off, and we're going to need some student participation in that.
Yes.
I think our band has already agreed to perform, but we're going to need other students to help get people from the ATC to the high school, to the cafeteria, the auditorium. If you have something that you would like to share from your school, if you would like to present, have a poster set up, or someone there to hand out information about your school and the exciting things that we're doing, they love student participation, and it's not just about the upper level kids, it's about the elementary kindergarten kids as well. So, we will set up a place, and we'll be getting more information out to everyone about that. Food will be provided, so it'll be a big deal. So, we're real excited about that.
Yeah, I encourage you all, just like tonight, you had a few minutes to showcase your schools. That's a great place to showcase your students in your school. Have them come, have them even do presentations to the adults and interact, and have a good opportunity for everybody to see how great Estill County is and how wonderful our facilities and our students are and the impacts that we're making in their lives.
It'll start, they'll start having a meet and greet at, at about 5:00 o'clock. I'll be getting more of the, all the official details out to everybody, but Ms. Williams, Mr. Brock, Ms. Melinda Barnett, all of those people will be getting some of those emails out to everyone. If you do plan on some of your students coming, or things that are quick, like a five-minute thing, or things that you could hand out that was a flyer, or if you had some students there to say, "Hey, this is what's going on at my school," anything like that, that would be just fast because there's a lot of information, and they'll have a board meeting that night as well. There won't be an election that night, but we will have a board meeting that night for KSBA. But if you could do something like that, we would highly encourage it, and there will be a lot of, one person's not more important than the other. I don't mean to sound like that, but there'll be a lot of people from KSBA and places like that that are here. So, I would really love for you all to, to come and to share in that. So, we're real excited about it. And then, Mr. Brock, he and I talked several times this week, and I just, I don't think you mentioned it, but just a reminder to everyone that Mr. Brock has an open door policy.
Yes.
And we're glad to welcome him to Estill County. Tonight's our first official, regular call board meeting.
All right.
So, he has an open door, so if you have concerns, questions, you can stop by central office. He would be more than happy to talk you up. You can speak to him.
Yeah, absolutely. I had it on my notes, but I get carried away talking about kids and stuff. Yeah, absolutely. So, I know we'll have public comment here in a minute, and, and we'll address that, but any, if you have any questions, concerns, I mean, I may not be in my office, I may be out in the building, so call, make an appointment. I'll be more than happy to talk with anybody. I do have an open, open door policy, and I'll be more than happy to meet with anybody within the community and discuss whatever it is they may be concerned about.
So, Ms. Mullins, we kind of got through everyone bragging on their school. Would you like to brag on Estill Springs?
Yes, I apologize for being late. We have kindergarten camp tonight, so I just put together just a little something of what's been going on at Estill Springs this summer, and then I'll talk for a second about it.
Thank you.
Okay, this summer, we've been really busy. One of the things that I'm most proud of and excited about, in the top left there, you'll see our garden club planted a lot of seeds in the spring, and we've got pumpkins, tomatoes, herbs, and cabbage that we are going to actually be able to use some at school, this when we return. So, we've got a lot of stuff growing in our garden. We're really excited about that. Ms. Newby is our teacher representative for the garden club, and we're really proud of the work they've done. Those kids have come all through the summer too to check on their plants, which I think is precious. We have enjoyed Relay for Life with our own survivor, Preston Adams. A lot of you remember Ms. Adams. Our second grade teacher, her son Preston, was diagnosed with leukemia when he was younger, but he is a survivor and is in remission. But we continue to have a very active role in the community with Relay for Life, not only for Preston, but for others who are fighting or have fought with cancer. So, we enjoyed that this summer. We're really excited about our new construction and the dedication of the Urban High Memorial Park. That was such a wonderful ceremony. I have went back multiple times and watched our Urban Eagles sing their fight song. I just thought that was such a special moment for our community as a whole, and I don't know if, do we have Urban Eagles in here? I won't, I won't ruin the secret, but our goal is for our students to learn the Urban High Fight Song, to be able to sing it in the amphitheater, so those, so that can be, maybe become an annual tradition on that, what they continue to call Hallowed Ground. So, we're really, we're really proud of that and what it can also then turn around and provide for our students. Our Charge teachers have been really busy this summer. They attended an elevation summit where they learned everything from not only history, but they also learned a lot of Kagan strategies. You know, that is a, that is a professional learning opportunity that would be hard for us to provide for a full staff, but we absolutely can, you know, we're thankful for the work with Charge, that they can train those teachers to then come back to our school and then train us in what they've learned. They also had a trip to Philadelphia, Gettysburg, and the Flat 93 Memorial. A lot of those things, I know they'll be excited to turn around and share with our students this year. But one of the most fun events that we had was our Summer Fun Day that we were able to have. We had 66 students and 18 staff members who were in attendance that day. The students not only had some academic activities, but they had a whole lot of fun. We had the bubble pit, we tie-dyed shirts, they built birdhouses, they did all, we packed as much as we could into one day, but we were so pleased with the turnout and with the participation. We fed them lunch, we fed them some breakfast. We just had a great day. So, it's been a busy summer. We've turned around twice, and it's time for school to start, but we're excited for school to be back in session. We're excited for the upcoming school year. To see those kindergartners in there tonight just really gets us ready to, to start the school year, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. Other than that, it's been a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Okay, Mr. Simpson, do we have any public comments?
With that being said, then I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Samples makes a motion, and Tammy Hardy makes a second. All in favor? Thank you all.